The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dave Mills. I'm running the meeting tonight. Ken is on vacation. So if we could, please introduce ourselves, starting from afar. Mike LaMoth, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Mike Frini, Board of Finance.
Calvin Brown, City Council.
Anthony Demato, City Council.
Joe Diesel-Gagny, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Jake Kelly, Board of Finance.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
And I'm Dave Mills.
Okay. Let's see. Okay. Can we get a... I've got it. Approval of minutes of a regular joint meeting on June 14th through 16th, and a special board meeting on June 1st through 16th, 2016. So move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Consent calendar?
There are eight items. Two, A is to make an additional appropriation of $3,519 within the Stormwater Trust operating budget for maintenance of sites. B, to make an additional appropriation of $106 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund funded by donations. C is to make an additional appropriation of $42,000 within Park Department's operating budget funded by the Page Park Pool Depreciation Trust account for repairs and replacement of the building heater and hot water heater. D is to make an additional appropriation of $21,800 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund funded by insurance proceeds to replace a police cruiser. E is to transfer $10,038 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund for the replacement of a police cruiser. F is to make an additional appropriation of $1,100 within the Special Education Grant Fund funded by grant revenue for the Adult Education Program. G is to make an additional appropriation of $4,240 within the Special Education Grant Fund funded by grant revenue for the Immigrant Children and Youth Education Program. And H is to make additional appropriations totaling $44,500 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund funded by grant revenue for various programs.
I get a motion to... Any discussion?
I have a discussion on D and E, please.
Okay. Let's pull those out. D and E. Can we vote on the others? Oh, we need a motion. We have a motion. We need a...
You would have a motion to take those two out, and then you can make a motion to approve the others besides D and E.
Okay. Let's make a motion. We have a motion to approve the others. So move? Second. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes? Okay. Would you like to go ahead and discuss D and E?
Yes. I would like to just ask for clarification on the amounts of money on D and E. So we have $21,800 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund funded by insurance to replace a police cruiser, followed by an additional $10,038 for the replacement of a police cruiser. So are those two numbers to be totaled together for $31,000? And that's the first question. The second is why out of the Equipment Building Sinking Fund?
Chief here.
Glenn could probably answer that, too.
All right, Glenn. What about Glenn and the chief?
The light's off for some reason.
I don't know.
Could I get some help from you?
Hi, Glenn.
Yeah, usually if a cruiser is damaged, we obviously have insurance for that purpose. So yes, it is the two amounts. There's the insurance coverage for one amount, and then the balance we're taking care of. We're taking care of it out of the Building Sinking Fund so as not to have it affect the General Fund. We want to keep everything in the General Fund as solemn as possible and only for extreme emergencies. We had the money available in the Equipment Sinking Fund, so that's why we chose that versus the General Fund.
Any further questions?
No, thank you.
Anyone else? I get a motion to accept the D and E?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Three, to transfer $8,650 from the General Fund contingency account for the Forestville Little League Irrigation System on Daly Street.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes? Four?
Four, to transfer $20,000 from the General Fund contingency account for the Bristol Boys and Girls Club Cambridge Park Program.
I have a motion to accept. So move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes? One abstention. Do we have that?
I do.
Okay. Number five?
To transfer $164,120 from the Contractual Obligations Account to various accounts within the Police Department's operating budget for the settlement of the police contract.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes? Number six?
Is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by the Controller.
Good evening, everyone. We have some good news. Last year, we received a grant for over $2 million at the last moment, the last...oh, beginning of June, for road reconstruction and things like that. Even in this economy and what's happening at the state, we received it again for about $2.4 million. We received it a few weeks ago. Robin contacted Walter, and it's a grant that is one-time, that we don't expect it every year. We didn't budget for it, and we're going to obviously do additional work as far as the roads are concerned. So that's really good news at a tune of 2.4...almost 2.5 million, Robin tells me. Also, other good news is the Clerk's Office has got $100,000 more in revenue than what we budgeted. We budget prudently, but certain things came in as far as conveyance and other type of revenues. So that's to the good for last year as far as the surplus is concerned. Minor bad news, minor to us as a whole, but to the department, it's probably not minor. Each...before this meeting, I always request from the different departments any problems that I should be aware of to express to you during this process. The Director of the Library said that the state has cut two of their grants somewhere in the neighborhood. One is $1,800, and another one is yet to be seen, but we're not going to see it. So it's the lingering effect of what's happening. You may have read a couple of weeks ago that the governor cut $3 million in state aid, state grant aid to municipalities. The only problem is you never told us who's being cut. You hear that, John, yeah? So we have no idea at this point, and it's been weeks later, how that's going to happen, who is it going to happen to? Is it uniform? If it was uniform, it'd be about $100,000. But in the past, he hasn't been uniform, as I probably mentioned to you before with Fairfield County. He's hit a little harder than Hartford County and Litchfield County. So really, we don't have any idea about that. Probably in the next meeting, I'll be able to share with you what the cut is. But we've got the auditors coming in, in and out of the offices. We're preparing for the audit. We've tightened things up. We've met with the partners in charge, and there was a few squeaks in the wheels that we had to correct, and everything seems to be going along fine. We're also dealing with...it's a little too premature to go into detail about it, but I'm speaking to the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Manager. We have some over expenditures on their side, and you've heard it through the Superintendent with regards to special education costs. Bristol and all municipalities are experiencing that. So that's going to affect our prior-year audit, and we're working with the business office over there to try to negate it as far as we can. But it's just a word to the wise. We wanted to bring that up to you. Other than that, Acting Mayor, there's nothing else to...
Any idea on that second grant from the state for the libraries? How much that is?
No. Debbie sent me a letter. Debbie Brozo, the Director, sent me a letter about the $1,800, but the other grant, she didn't mention the amount. I don't know if she's here right now. Debbie is...is she here?
Yeah. That is a grant that comes from the Connecticut Humanities Council, and you might be aware that the state cut all funding for that totaling $1.72 million. Our grant from there varies from year to year, so that will be a substantial amount of money that will have to come from somewhere else to do our programming for the year.
Will we reduce the program?
No. No. We'll find other sources, but that was something that we had counted on.
How much was the grant last year?
Well, we had various ones from there. Right now, we just received one for $2,000 for our Author Luncheon that is going to be held on this Thursday, so we don't know what the impact for the rest of the fiscal year will be.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of Glenn?
Yeah, through the chair. I have a question, Glenn.
Hi, Glenn.
On the Board of Ed with their overspending on the special ed, now that came up obviously during the budget hearings.
Yes, it did.
Now, what's the plan going forward? Because that was a contentious issue then. I mean, do they have a plan coming into this following year? Are we going to overspend again, or...
I wish I could say that I know, but I don't know. But when I was contacted in the last couple of weeks by the Superintendent and Gary, and they want to set a meeting...we met last Friday to talk initially about that. They had a spreadsheet of where they stand, and basically what they would like to do is meet with the Mayor's Office, myself, and Gary, and talk about any options that are available to us. We really don't know. The amount could be significant, and what I would probably suggest is to bring our partner in charge of the audit in on it to give us some suggestions, because if he's auditing multiple communities, let's see with those other communities how they are handling it. I don't know. The situation that is always on the forefront is the municipal budgeting role, and if they overexpend something, we've got to find out from the State Department of Education, can we just let that hit the financial statements? Let a deficit happen and show it in the financial statement, saying, "No, John, you don't think that can happen?" Yeah, I probably would think the same way. Special rules would apply for Boards of Education. However, it doesn't apply for the Cafeteria Fund, because in the past, you're probably aware, we've had deficits in the Cafeteria Fund years ago, up to $200,000, and we let it hit the financial statements, and we didn't take it out of our contingency on purpose, and we never were chastised for it. But the rules may be changed for the Board of Ed on the General Fund side, so we're going to try to find out from our auditors, and if our auditors don't have an answer, then we'll have to work with our Board of Ed and the State Board of Education to find out how to handle this. But I wouldn't want to increase for that amount of MBR, so it's going to be...can we transfer funds from other funds, grants and things like that? What can we do to obviously alleviate the situation?
Well, we knew this was going to be an issue.
Yeah.
And by their own admission, this is going to be a growing issue going forward.
Yes.
So I'd be more concerned with hearing a solution before the end of the year than I would be concerned with an overrun this year.
Yes. I spoke with Ellen this afternoon, and I did ask her to contact the Mayor's Office. Obviously, he is on vacation, and he's coming back, from what I understand, for next Tuesday for whatever purpose. And I said, "We really need to have an early morning meeting if it's necessary, 7:30, 8:00." So I'm sure that she's followed through on that. I'll probably be standing here next month telling you what our probable solution is, if there is a solution. But it's something that we've got to deal with, and I'm hoping that it's going to be a one-time correction. We correct it one time, and then going forward, it doesn't grow, obviously. You know what I mean?
They were pretty confident that it was going to continue to grow. I think that's why we pushed them to work on a solution going forward.
Yes.
Whether it was to establish an in-house program so we're not shipping a lot of these kids elsewhere for treatment, whether we can establish something like that here and save ourselves the $60,000 a child.
You're right. I think the first part they are attempting, and they have done so, because you've got to identify the problem first. They've identified it, but now it's financially identify it. What's the dollar amount? And that's what they're attempting to do. The problem, you know, the problem is that even though it's July, we're still receiving bills for goods and services that are attributable to June, and that's normal. You know, the 18th of June, you get a good...excuse me, good and service, and you don't get billed till 30 days later. So they've got to apply a lot of that back to the old fiscal year. That could be for utilities, fuels, public transportation, maybe billing, you know, 30 days afterwards. So they've got to know they've identified the problem. They're working on now, as I suggested to them, and they know that, to find out what the dollar amount is as close as possible. We should know that by the next meeting. And then obviously, in the meantime, let's look at a solution. Let's talk to the State Board of Education. What are our options? I would love to just let it hit the financial statements, but one of the problems either way is I've been speaking to you about going out to the rating agencies. That won't bode well with the rating agencies. But they're seeing this in other communities. We're not the only one. So I'm sure that even...I mentioned Middletown got the AAA last month. I'm sure they got special ed costs just like anyone else. So I'll need to speak with their Finance Director over there and see how they handle it with the rating process, because I certainly don't want that to be a detriment.
Well, right, because at some point, we're sinking so much...you know, if we're going over budget this much, then all of a sudden bringing on personnel at 80, 90, 100, 120,000 a year isn't going to be such a big deal, because we're covering our costs by bringing kids back.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I would imagine going over a couple hundred thousand or more every year now with the special ed is going to be rather regular if we don't get this under control.
I agree with you. And one of the things I spoke with Ellen about, and I will recommend to the Chair of the Board of Finance, is, and someone has mentioned about starting the process earlier, is I would recommend that you come to some type of arms-length agreement with the Board of Education of parameters for increases early, not just be blindsided when they adopt their budget in late January or February. That was done in a neighboring community, and it was very effective. Southington met with the Board of Education over there early on, early on as being December, and said, "Listen, maximum of 3 percent, minimum of 2." The Board of Ed agreed, and that's what they were given, was the 3 percent, with a caveat saying that if any more money comes from the state of Connecticut, they will forward that. That happened. They happen to be fortunate to get an additional $500,000 in ECS money, and the town said, "Okay, we promised you that. You kept your side of the deal." They gave them the $500,000. We could do something along that lines, too, because we've got to manage the mill rate next year.
What's the repercussions if they keep going over?
Mill rate?
Not just to us. I'm talking about to the Board of Ed. I mean, do we have any repercussions to say, "Listen, you know, enough is enough. You've got to draw the line, and you have to make do within these parameters"?
Well, you...yeah.
Because if not, if not, they're giving us a budget, and they're going over it every year. What good is the budget?
Yeah, I would agree with you. There's got to be an understanding, a professional collective understanding of, you know, first of all, what is the increase going to be? Next year is supposed to be worse than this year. It's going to be a very difficult year for everyone up here, and I would think that communication has to start much earlier.
Glenn?
Yes?
Do you know if they've started their audit of special ed funds? I know they were negotiating and they were contracting for that to begin. Do you know if that's happened?
Good point. No, I don't know that. But I will find...you know that, John? Anybody?
I believe it's about to begin. They're also under request that they have a general item on every Board of Finance meeting going forward, every month, that they can update the Board of Finance as to where they begin, not on the General Fund, but on the Special Education Fund.
So that may be part of the solution.
But the other side of that is, and we can sit here and say what we want, if five kids move into this town tomorrow, they require a special education, there's not anything anybody can do about it. It's just like, you know, we can go a winter and have 10,000 snowstorms. There's no way Walter can budget for 10,000 snowstorms. It's the same unfortunate situation that the state needs to get its arms around at some point, but they don't have any money either, but...
That's why it's important we take this on right now.
Which is what they're doing, Michael.
Right. You know, but... Let's handle this now, because they've already said that this has been a growing problem, and they see no end in sight. So if that's the case, I mean, they should have already had a handle on it, I believe, because it seemed like they had a handle on it coming into the budget system.
Well, they're already...like, the last finance...I go to their finance committee. I mean, they're open. Anybody can go to them. At their last committee, they...I know they have contacted correct districts to form some type of a...
Coalition.
Coalition to handle kids that might go to private school in Massachusetts, for example, at $140,000 a year to keep them here for 50. So that process, but that process...that process doesn't work as quickly as you would want it to, because before you can do that, you have to have a planning and placement team meeting. The parents have to agree that that's a move that they will agree to as far as their child is concerned, and if the parents don't agree, and the local school district does it anyway, the ultimate solution is a court, and then the judge says yes or no. So it's not a...placing special education students is not an easy, simple task.
I get that, but they know that, too. And they know the numbers right now, and they know the problems with the kids at various levels.
That's correct.
So, you know, from a taxpayer's perspective, this is such a huge number, and it's going to continue to be a larger number.
It is.
You know, they're going to have to come up with a real solution, a real solution without the need for the help of the state, because we know the state's useless in this case.
Okay, if we could, I mean, what's going to happen, obviously? I think there's discussion underway.
There is.
So that's all we can do at this point.
That's right.
So that's where we're going to at this point. So as long as that is happening, I think that's the thing that we're trying to decide.
Yeah, I'll be brief, Mayor. It is happening. Your points are well taken. We're going to have meetings. I'm going to get some meetings with the mayor and their side, our side, Robin, bring in the heads, talk to the auditors, and if it's necessary, talk to the state of Connecticut Department of Education. We'll get some guidance, see what's taking place in other communities, and then with that, at some point, we'll inform the Joint Board, and certainly leading with the Chair.
Great. Well, the proactive approach is exactly what we're doing, so we're not sitting and waiting until next year.
You're aware that that's the first key.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Anything further? Any other questions? Okay. I believe...any other business to come before the meeting? Have a motion for adjournment? So move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.
...for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start with a moment of silence, please, for people on active duty, also for the police in Dallas, and for all the events that happened last week. Thank you very much. If we could start by introducing the council, please. Calvin?
Calvin Brown, District 1.
Anthony Demato, District 1.
Joe Diesel-Gagny, District 2.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
And I'm Dave Mills, District 3. I'm Acting Mayor. Ken Cocaine is on vacation tonight, so we'll proceed with the meeting.
Okay. Number two. Can we get approval of minutes, regular city council meeting on June 14th, 2016, a special?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? How about the special city council meeting on May 26th?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Opposed? All in favor? I already did that. Okay. Public participation? Deb Schur?
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Debbie Schur, 6 Pilgrim Road. I'm here tonight to express my concern over a recent news article in The Observer which stated that the MBS Building Committee is considering reducing the number of seats in the Memorial Boulevard Theater by more than 50%, down to a mere 400 seats. Having participated in the task force in 2014 and '15 and staging several demonstration events to show just how the potential of this theater, I was speechless, and as most of you know, that's kind of a tough act, when I read this. Out of the six events we produced, five of them utilized the balcony for overflow seating. We were volunteers. We were not professionals, and yet we managed to fill the place five times. Mr. Mills, you were there. So I ask again, why? Why would we take an asset, a historic theater in the heart of downtown, which the community has rallied to support time and time again, and cut its legs off right out from under it? The theater has two distinct seating areas, the floor and the balcony. If you had a smaller group renting the space, they would simply utilize the floor seats. If it's a larger group, then they use both. This is not rocket scientists. They need to stop trying to reinvent the wheel. And to read the reasoning of some of the building members that are worried about parking or those who want to add more concessions, I just have this to say. You will not have to worry about either if you are only attracting shows or groups with 400 people capacity. After each of the shows that I took part in, I spoke with members of every group that performed, and to a man, they commented on the capacity. It's perfection, small enough to make that intimate connection with your audience, and yet large enough to make money. Currently, the high school auditoriums range in size from 600 to 900. Why would you plan for a theater that is even less than that? Why would any of the dozens of groups who make do with the auditorium-style seating move their event to a smaller venue? We need to capitalize on this wonderful characteristics that this theater represents: the fly space, the stage area, its accessible location, and its natural acoustics and character, and create something that is a signature event venue for our area. I ask you tonight to do what you need to do to ensure that this is not yet another Bristol project that goes nowhere fast, not another lost opportunity where an entire generation wonders what could have been, what should have been, and they continue to go out of town for entertainment and spending-related dollars, eating and drinking out of town as well. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, Debbie.
Yes?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I missed the first part. What edition of The Observer was that in, the most recent one? Because I didn't see the article. I want to...
Friday, June 24th.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a copy. Would you like to...
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Debbie, I would like to respond to you if I could. I'm on the Memorial Boulevard Building Committee, and I completely agree with you. They had a meeting this morning, and unfortunately, I had court, and I wasn't able to attend. But I will try to get an answer for you as to why that is, and if we can do anything about it.
Please. I know their concern is parking, and I understand that they're not from around this area. They don't know the history of the parking at the Memorial Boulevard School, that it really has never been a problem. We always seem to find a way. The Barnes Group works with us. Perhaps we need to get in some kind of a deal with the Barnes Group on a long-term plan. Parking's never been a problem. That school has had events there forever. So they need to take the emphasis off the parking, I think, and concentrate on what really matters there.
Debbie, I was at the meeting this morning. I had to leave early, but I did stop in to see the meeting, so I was part, I heard part of the discussion. Parking was one of the things that they talked about. They also, they gave a litany of other theaters that are in the area, and they gave the capacity. And I think they based some of it on that. Also, they talked about some of the changes. Remember the last meeting they had at the library, where they talked about the green room and some of the things? They tried to incorporate some of those ideas. They also talked about concessions and where those could go. As I said, I had to leave before they got to the dollars and cents, but all of that was discussed, and I did express the thought that 400 seats is certainly not going to be adequate. So that, you know, they are taking that back into consideration. So again, I can't give you the results, because I left.
Okay.
But at least it was discussed this morning.
Great. Thank you.
I asked some questions, because I wanted to find. I wanted to find out what the results of the meeting were today, and I don't have all the final conclusions, but I think they did discuss, and I think they've recommended a increase in the seating capacity, but I'm not quite sure I know what the exact final number was. Not final number, the renewed number.
One of the issues for me is, we've been discussing what the average ticket price should be.
Right.
And we came up with $35. $35 at 400 seats is not going to pay the light bill.
Correct.
So.
Okay, I mean, we did take them, but thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you.
Sean Ruess?
Good evening. Sean Ruess, 50th Hill and Caster Road. I went to a public workshop this past week, well, last week, and actually created a Facebook event for it, because nobody else did. And I invited everyone in Bristol on my Facebook. Some of the people are involved in city government here in Bristol. And of all the people that I invited, there were some other people, they actually in turn invited some people. Four. A woman named Kristy Elkins, who's a Bristol resident, invited three people, and Jeffrey Caggianno invited one person. So I'm going to ask all of you, if you think you might be able to help me with this, because I'm just one person, and we don't have one spot on the city website to inform the residents of Bristol when there's a public meeting that's going to affect their future. I don't know how else to go about this. I mean, I spoke to the mayor about it at the BDA Downtown Committee meeting, and I mentioned, because the representatives from Malone and McBroom, who are handling the redevelopment workshop, I mentioned to them the document, TOD 202, which I brought up, I believe, to the city council. I brought it up to the BDDC, the BDDC's Corporation Council. Liaison Noel Bates asked me for a copy of this. I emailed it supposedly so it can be included in the minutes on the city website. It's still not up there. So I printed out a copy for each one of you, and for Corporation Council, so that you can see that they suggest that we educate the public, and we do public outreach for these kinds of things, and we also do direct mailings to people, because not everybody has internet access. And I know we can't do everything, but I'm quite sure we can do better. I don't think there's a lot of effort going on, and it shows. It shows when you go to a public workshop for the Route 6 Quarter Future Development, and there's only three or four members of the public there, or maybe six, but I'm thinking like, three, and I invited two of them, and one's me, so that's not good. That's not a good way to solicit public information. This task list that I see from Malone and McBroom says that we're going to have a public visiting workshop for the downtown of Bristol on 7/19. It's not on the city website, it's not posted on the calendar outside the clerk's office, which I think is a really shabby way to inform the public. I'm really getting sick of it, you know? I'm getting sick of it. I post something about a meeting online, and people say, "Well, it's on the city website", and I have to argue with people that it's not there. Go to the city website, there's several different places that you can look for city meetings, but they're not all on there. They're not all on the mayor's Facebook page either. We can do better than that. I can do better than that, and I am doing better than that, but I don't want to do this. This isn't my job. Okay? I'm going to give you guys this information, and then I'm going to give this to Corporation Council, and I'm going to give this directly to you.
Thank you, Sean. Louis Usala?
Thank you.
Sean? I have a question for Sean. Could I ask a question of Sean? I'm sorry.
No problem.
Sean, and I was at that meeting, and I did have to leave early. This is the Route 6 Quarter Study Meeting. And is the website still available for people to vote on their suggestions, or?
No, I think it closed that weekend, I believe, or that following weekend, but...
Okay, all right. Thank you. I was just, I just would encourage people to go on and do that.
For the downtown, I'm adamant. We've got to do better, because if we don't...
I get it.
I'm going to show that nobody tried, and I don't want to do that. I want to be positive, too.
Thank you, Sean.
Thanks.
Mr. Sala?
Hi. My problem is...
Excuse me, could you just give your name and address for the...
My name is Louis Usala. My family owns a three-family house on a corner of Muzzy Street and Barnes Street, right across the street from First Space at Muzzy Field, okay? The house is, we've been living, it's been in the family for 80 years, and the house has been there even before Muzzy Field existed. Now, I love Muzzy Field, it's been good to us, never had any problems, I was a ball chaser, stole peanuts, popcorn, and Cracker Jacks in a stance for Tony Raffanello, who was my mentor, but now Muzzy Field has caused me a problem, so I'd like to know if I can get it resolved. The city purchased the house next door to me, and today they tore it down. About six weeks ago, I went to the recreation meeting, and I was told, rumors fly around like crazy when people are doing construction, and a rumor was they're going to use this piece of property to park buses. Now, my house is only 12 feet away from the house, the property line that the city purchased, and on that side of the house, there are six bedrooms. I heard they were going to park buses. There is not a wide piece of property, it's only 60 feet wide, and I went to the meeting, and they point, told me explicitly, "It's an empty lot, we're going to park buses there, and we're going to park a lot of buses there." Now, these buses are 10 feet high, if they park right on the property line, 12 feet away from my house, and their exhaust fan blows, they're going to be blowing carbon dioxide, diesel fuel, right into my house. And I'd like to know if something could be done about it. I called the mayor, and I says, "What do you got to put buses there for? Why don't you put them on the street where you always put them?" His answer was, "We want to save the parking for spectators." So now I'm at a standstill, that I'd like to know if you people can do anything about it.
What we'll do is, we'll bring it back to the...
I am sorry, I'm kind of deaf.
We'll bring it back to the appropriate committees and see what we can be done. I mean, it'll be, it'll be discussed probably in the Park Department, and we can do that. I mean, we can't take a vote tonight or anything, but...
I know, I'm on a quest for more parking space, I can't blame them, but I, what hurts me and my own, I have to speak up.
I understand that. Thank you very much for doing it. We'll try to follow through and get back to you on that.
Now, remember, it's only 12 feet away.
Gotcha.
An arm stroke.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's Florence Roy.
I'm Florence Roy, 90 Barnes Street. It's regarding the nettings that you're supposed to have raised. At Muzzy Field, there's about 61 balls that's already come on Barnes Street and Muzzy Street, and one went on the second floor porch the other day, which they just tore in the house. I hope they kept the ball. Well, this is a problem, because I was at the game, the Bristol game, the other night, and one just went right through the net. You know, this is ridiculous. We're getting, I'm getting a rent on Barnes Street, and Muzzy Streets are really getting it, hitting on the houses, because now there's only one left.
Okay.
And another thing, I had called Mr. Booton, they had put sidewalks on our streets here and there about three years ago, and I kept calling Mr. Booton, and every time I called, they said, "Well, you know, he's a busy man." So about the fifth time, I said, "You know, this is getting ridiculous. I am a taxpayer, and I expect to have somebody call me back." Well, I finally, he did call me, but he never replied, and saying, "What they were going to do." The sidewalks are all deteriorating from the winter after, they had put the sidewalks from 80, and 78, and 90. They're all deteriorating. That shouldn't be happening in a couple of years. And I never got a reply from Mr. Booton, who's supposed to be in charge of that.
Excuse me. Walt, can we just, we'll refer to the Director Vasalka, maybe he can check on that tomorrow or in the near future, and you could check with Mr. Vasalka, okay? He's the head of the department, and he can answer for him, okay?
Okay. We also asked the people that's doing our work, which I've known personally, if they're going to put another drain on my side, the even side, on Barnes Street, because there's only one way down the other end, on Tulip Street, and one above, up next door. They should have another one on my side, because the water that comes from the park is really, comes over our, my sidewalks and everything, and it's not a good drainage there, even what they're going to expect to do. And those, from what I understand, the cement was supposed to have been, from what I understand, it was inferior material they had used, that's why they came apart so fast, because I know somebody that works in cement. And let me see, that's about it. Oh, and the paving of the road, from what I understand, they only do patching where they tore the road apart. I guess some people are complaining, but everybody complains anyhow. I know they had bad luck with the first time they dug the, to dig for this, make these repairs, and of course, gas company had to be involved, but now they say they're just going to pave just those areas they dug up. That's ridiculous. The whole road's all apart on Barnes Street. So are they going to pave the whole road, or are they just going to leave it the way it is?
Walt, do you want to address that?
Yes, on projects where we install new drainage, we patch for the first year, we allow settlement, we let the road sit, and then we'll be coming back in next year to repave the entire road.
Does that answer your question?
Okay.
Okay, and as far as the sidewalks are concerned, it's the same gentleman you can check with, and he'll check with Director, with Mr. Booton. And as far as the nets are concerned, you just want to address that, or can she call you, or whatever, and are they the same height as they have been, or is there any changes? Can you address that at all?
Or are the blues just so good, they're hitting the balls higher and farther?
If they were that good, they'd be hitting them fair and not foul. That's the problem, right?
I'm te...
Can you give us, just are they the same height as they had been in the past? Are they lower?
Well, the net's a little bit lower than what they were.
Okay.
I think originally, we might have had a couple poles, they might have been 70 feet, and these are probably around 60 feet, 55 feet, so.
Okay.
Other than that, but that's the way it was engineered, that's the way it was designed. There's wind load if you go up higher, so there's going to be some engineering supports on that, if you have to do that, so.
So we'd have to get through this season, probably, and then readjust, readdress it at another point.
We can take a look at it, but it'll be costly, too.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's an area behind, there's a home plate there, it's right there, and it's low. I watched it last night, I'm sorry.
All right. Again, maybe we can just take a look at that, okay? It's hard for you to describe it here, we'd have to go down and take a look, so maybe Director Swickles can go down and take a look, and at some point, if you maybe just drop a line, or call his office, maybe he can meet you there, and you can discuss it with him there. At least you can show him there, right, as to what's going on. Okay, Kate Matthews?
For the record, it's Kate Matthews. I reside at 47 Prospect Place in Bristol, and I'm here tonight to talk on the topic of transparency. I spoke a couple of months ago when the mayor refused to comply with a lawful Freedom of Information Act request, and did not produce public documents as required by state and federal statutes, as you may recall. This had to do with discussions and negotiation pertaining to downtown development, and the public has a right to know, as a matter of law. And I understand that that matter has been resolved before the Freedom of Information Commission, and a decision has been rendered that that was a public document that should have been turned over. I also spoke a couple of months ago about the mayor's failure to deliver his pre-election promise to have a public referendum on big-ticket issues. And at that time, I talked about downtown development, and you may recall that before the 2015 election, that's something that the mayor promised, and he totally abandoned it, though he had the opportunity to promote it before the Charter Revision Commission. You'll notice that there's been no discussion of it in this body. And indeed, I was at a Charter Revision Commission meeting, where it was discussed by the chair, and mentioned by the chair on the record, that it didn't go forward, because not a single person brought any information forward to support a public referendum on big-ticket issues. Now, last week, we have a report that the mayor strong-armed a local news publication to drop a column because it quote "commented on the mayor." He allegedly used the financial threat of withdrawing ad revenue as leverage to press for this. Now, I query, as an aside, whether the revenue that was used as leverage was city ad revenue or the mayor's personal ad revenue, because that could certainly present a problem, a bigger one, if it was the former rather than the latter. And notably, since that has been published, the mayor has not spoken out and contradicted the allegations that were made, and neither has a representative from the Bristol Observer, although there has been a substantial period of time where they could have done so. And I think what this points to is a conclusion that our mayor prefers to do business behind closed doors, that he doesn't want commentary on his actions, that he doesn't want the public to know what is going on here at City Hall, and that indeed, he doesn't really care what the public has to say. I would also note that I looked at tonight's agenda, and I would say on the record that there is absolutely no unfinished business and no new business listed. It is a very small agenda. In fact, I haven't seen a one-page agenda like this in a really long time. And I would suggest to you that the lack of agenda, based on the fact that the mayor is not here while he's on vacation, and we have the acting mayor sitting as the chair, indicates that indeed, this body is not running this city. It is one man who is running this city, and that's a real problem, because that's not the way that our government is meant to be run. We're supposed to be governed by this body, and you're supposed to all have a right to speak up and be participants in the process, and that's not what happens. What we have is a puppet master, and what we seem to have are puppets, puppets who rubber stamp. And I'd like to also follow up by saying that if you don't want to agree with me, the proof of the pudding is in the eating. Ask yourself how many times you voted yes when the mayor has voted no, or you voted no when the mayor has voted yes. I would hazard a guess that since you've been elected, I could probably count that number on one hand, if any hands are required at all. So, we have a problem. When newspapers stop reporting news, impunity follows, and bullies and tyrants do what they do best. Where there's smoke, there's fire, and I would just caution you, everyone here, every single one of you, and indeed, the people in the room who work with the mayor, where there is smoke, there is fire, and if something happens, and it's not good, you need to speak up, and you need to get it out there, because you will be painted with the same brush. It's a shame that this is going on in 2016 in the city of Bristol, which is the 11th largest city in the state of Connecticut, and we have more in common with the Chinese dictatorship, with newspapers that publish propaganda and not news, than we do with the United States of America. What a shame. That's all I have to say. I would ask that we would call for a vote right now of everyone who supports free and open government, and maybe we could do a roll call from right to left, and see who supports that, and who would be willing to go on the record tonight. Anybody willing to do that?
I'm fine with it.
All right, let's do it. I, that's, that's public participation. I invite you to respond back to me, and tell me that you are committed to that.
Kate, well, that's kind of out of order here. We're just, you made public comment, I don't think asking for a vote is appropriate.
Well, maybe just, just a response. I mean, all these folks who spoke and got responses from you.
Through the chair.
These kind of people were, were able to get feedback from city officials. I think it's appropriate, stand up and be heard. If you think that open and free government, a government that speaks to the people and is responsive to the people is important, maybe you should say so now on the record, and if not, you stay silent.
Through the chair, I'd be happy to respond to Mrs. Matthews. Thank you for your comments tonight. I am equally troubled by the news from earlier in the week that perhaps the mayor's office had some hand in getting a local columnist fired. I feel the same way, that it's not good for our democracy, and it's not good for the city, and I think it speaks to what I have felt is a less-than-stellar public discourse in town, and I think we all suffer from that. And I am in favor of open and transparent government. I think that every time you and other members of the audience have witnessed the chair shut down a discussion, there have been a few of us who have tried to raise our voices over that. And I know that's what the people elected us to do, and that's what I, for one, will continue to do, and I'm sure some of my colleagues can agree with me on that, but your points are well-taken, and it takes a lot of courage and love for community to come up here and lay out that case so eloquently as you did, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'll respond in the fact that I'll answer one of the, I don't want to say accusation, because that's not the right word, but rubber stamp, I am not. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. No comment on open and free?
I think it's, I think it's self-explanatory. Rubber stamp, I am not. Do I believe in open government? Sure, absolutely, or I wouldn't be here. Do I believe in transparent government? Sure, I wouldn't be here. But I'm going to leave it at that, and rubber stamp, I'm not.
Okay. I'll respond to that as well. As many of you know, I'm an attorney, and of course, I believe in open and honest government. I also believe in positivity.
Okay. That's it? That's it? Okay. Anybody else?
It's easy to agree with open and honest government. I mean, that's, that's a no-brainer. The rubber stamp thing, I, I don't think any of us think of us as rubber stamps, Kate, to be honest. Whether you're in a minority or the majority, I think, we don't often have as much open debate as we should. We've, it's, it's public information that we've been shut down occasionally in the past, but it doesn't mean that we don't strive for open and honest debate in government. And I think, and that's something that we all aspire to.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, thank you again for getting up and speaking to us, because we do need to be spoken to. And I'm certainly for open and honest, transparent government. I want to comment, aside from what you said, that I appreciate the fact that we're responding to public comment tonight. We're not normally allowed to do that. It's highly discouraged. So, I appreciate that, because I think that's the way it should be, every meeting, from Cemetery Commission to, you know, Sewer Committee. It should always be like this. So, I'm certainly in favor of that, and I appreciate the acting mayor allowing for more discourse tonight. I think that one of the problems that, if we are rubber stamping things, one of the things that causes that to happen is a lack of dialogue and communication, a lack of information ahead of time. It's very difficult to keep up with what's going on. We all have full-time jobs, except those of us that are retired, but the point is, we're not in City Hall all day long. We're not the one, we're not the one who's got all the information. And I wish more information was forthcoming on a timely basis, on all topics, all the time. And then I think it would lead to more discussion, and I think we would have better government here in Bristol.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
That feedback is helpful. Thank you.
Kate, just to answer, we had the pleasure of sitting together on the council, and I hope that at that point, you didn't think there was a rubber stamp coming from me at that point, and certainly there isn't one now.
Been a long time since.
It has been a long time for both of us, okay? And you realize, obviously, all of the deliberations that go into some of the things that happen. And a lot of times, it appears to be rubber stamped, because we don't have information, probably in some of the committees, etc., so we rely on our colleagues to get us that information. But I can assure you that nothing has changed, as far as I'm concerned, and my dealings with everybody else has kind of been the same thing. I think that we're all independent thinkers, and we don't just wait for someone to tell us how to vote. We certainly try to do the research and try to find out what is supposed to be done, and then vote to the best of our abilities at that point.
Fair enough. And sir, would you also comment on whether you support free and open government, transparent government?
I certainly do.
All right, so it's unanimous. Thank you.
Through the chair, if I can just make one more comment. I'd also like to say, I've never rubber stamped anything, and the mayor and I have disagreed on a number of issues. I think if he ever told me how to vote, I'd vote the other way, just despite him, frankly. And I'd like to also comment on what Mary said. I've never felt silenced in council. I've always felt that I can respond to anybody who talks up here. I've never felt that the mayor discourages us to speak. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Through the chair, can I, I hate to do it, but I have to do it. There's many different personalities behind this chair, so we all have to function together. And I will make a note that a lot of people aren't aware, because it's not visible, that we do work across party lines. I actually talk to a good number of everyone up here almost every other couple days, and I think that Councilman Proleski might be able to back me up on that, I mean, if he so desires. But there is conversation, and there's plenty of conversation, even when you think there isn't. So, you know, to think that we're not doing our job, and I'm not saying that's what you're insinuating, but to think that we're not doing our job is just flat-out not true.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Gamash, was that longer than three minutes?
I can assure you, mine will be less than three minutes. Tim Gamash, Seventy-Nine Cypress. As you all know, we had the Wallet Heels visit our city here recently, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank the city, the police department, the fire department, but most especially the park department. We're doing such a really good job of sprucing up the Boulevard. We had a lot of out-of-towners, out-of-staters visit that wall while it was here, and I dare say, to a person, I never heard anybody say anything negative about that Boulevard. Quite the contrary, they were very, very impressed with the Boulevard as a whole, and I think that's a reflection on Mr. Swickles and his staff. I just want to thank them on behalf of the Bristol Veterans Council.
Thank you, Tim. That ends public participation. Do we allow, if they haven't signed up, do we allow them to speak or not?
You can if you wish.
Okay. Dave, all right, if you'd be quick.
I was asked, Greg Hahn, One Fifty-Five Redwood Drive. I was asked by the Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble to come in and report to, also to the information that's been out there for Memorial Boulevard. And although, a lot of my notes I don't have to say, because they've already been said so eloquently, but I do want to bring a couple points. In speaking with Rich Terriel and Ken Ferris about the proposal, a couple things that need to be known. Bristol Corral has over five hundred people show up to their concerts. They would not be able to use the site. Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble, when we had a concert here for the Veterans Day concert, we would have had to turn away a hundred and fifty people if it was only four hundred. And that's just an estimate. It might have been even more. The O M Show has three shows a year, in excess of five hundred people per show. None of these local organizations would be able to use Memorial Boulevard if these changes are made. It's not just a disappointment, it's a huge disappointment for these organizations that we're pulling so hard for the revitalization of this theater. The reason the theater is just under one thousand, there's a tangible reason. When you rent music for a musical, it's based on the size of the facility. If it's a thousand or more, you pay an exorbitant amount of money for rental of the music. When you have some groups come in, if it's a certain size, a thousand or more, you spend more, you pay more money for that group to be there. If it's less, you pay less. That's the reason why. For nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight seats, you get the biggest bang for your buck, your most profit, based on those calculations. And there's no amount of popcorn or beer or number of coke check money that's going to make up for those seats, those rare ends that are not in those seats. It's a huge disappointment, because both organizations, Bristol Corral and Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble, will not be able to use this facility, and we love the stage. We love playing there, and we would not be able to use it. And as far as the ability to size it the way other organizations have theirs, whether it's Thomasin Opera House or whatever, I've played in the pit orchestras there. When they have filled house with good shows, they wish they had more seats. They want to sell more tickets. They feel hampered. They were looking forward to working here when they heard that there were going to be more seats here. The other thing that I recommended, and I did work with the committee when it was not getting together on Tuesday nights during rehearsal night, but one of the other things that would have set this apart and get this used more by other organizations is the addition of a pit for the orchestra. Every single other facility, use Thomasin as an example, they don't have a pit for the orchestra, which means the orchestra is extremely loud for the patrons that are up front. It makes it very difficult. It's difficult to put on a show there. If we're going to spend extra money, let's not spend the extra money to take out seats and add this and add that, simply put an area for an orchestra so that we can be a professional organization, attract the touring Beauty and the Beast to come in, because we have so many seats that we can sell, and we can afford to do it. Attract some of those shows that the Bushnell brings in, or other venues in Hartford bring in, because we would be able to. At four hundred, we will definitely not be able to, and it will be unused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, announcements, starting on my far left.
The first one announcement I have tonight is regarding the fact that all of our taxes are due this month, and I want to let people know, I've said this in the past, that you can pay your taxes online now. And I'm saying this because if I can pay my taxes online, anybody that has computer access can. It does save the city money, and it helps particularly this year with the problems that they've had with the DMV tax bills and all the phone calls and folks that they're having to deal with this year. If you can pay your taxes online, it's very helpful and easy for you. Again, I'm gonna ask that if people can give blood, that they sign up to donate, because the summer is a difficult time for blood drives. We've talked about the Bristol Blues a little bit tangentially here, as we talked about Muzzy Field. They're having another great season, and it is a fun-filled event. It's not just baseball, it's entertainment for young kids. They have their mascot, they have great singing of the National Anthem before the start of shows, and we have two more opportunities to have fireworks after the game this year, on July twenty-third and July thirtieth, which, believe it or not, is their last home game before they start the playoffs. And I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank Damato Construction for the new press box that just got finished, because that's right behind Home Plate now. It never used to be in that location, but it fits in beautifully with the classic historic structure of the park, and it's a great addition. So, I do want to thank them. And one more quick item, both Bristol Eastern and Bristol Central have their fields, their tracks shut down right now for the installation of the synthetic field, so I just want people to know that. If they utilize those facilities, they're gonna be shut down for a number of months for the synthetic field installation. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mary, for us Red Sox fans, you forgot to say Jim Rice is gonna be in Bristol Thursday.
That's important. I'm sorry I left that out.
That's a big deal. Just a couple of things, please. One is, the West End Association is gonna have its annual Summer Fest at Rockwell Park on August twentieth. The plans are shaping up beautifully. It's a great showcase, not only for the West End Association, but it's a showcase for a beautiful park, Rockwell Park. Second thing, Chamber Commerce is having a golf tournament on August first at Tungstus Plantation. Spots are still available. And a little shout-out, if I may, I want to recognize Chief Gould. I attended a pinning ceremony for the police department this past month, and Chief did a great job. It was a great event, and three longtime members of the department were promoted to Captain Spiros, Lieutenant Warner, and Sergeant Musser. And I gotta tell you that the enthusiasm, the rank-and-file, the support, the pride in the room, Chief, was great. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Jody?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, everyone has seen the tragic events that are occurring across the country with the police, and involve shootings and violence directed towards the police. It's such a tragedy, and it seems like it's going to get worse. But rest assured, I believe we're on top of things here in Bristol. Last night, I know that there are several officers that met with several members of the local chapter and double A C P to discuss interactions between the police and the community, and I think everyone came away with very positive feelings about that. I do not believe we have a problem here in our community, and if we did, I fully believe that our chief and our police administrations would be on top of it immediately. I have full confidence in our police force, and I commend them and I thank them for their service to us, to our community, to Bristol. And as a member of the police board, I want to encourage anyone, if you see anything, if you have any concerns, reach out to me, reach out to the chief, reach out to your police officers, and don't hesitate to do so. One other thing, I want to let everyone know that Bristol has a new radio station. It is called Bristol Beat. It is a streaming station. It can be found on bristlebeat.com, or you can download the app for your Apple device, your iPhone or your Android. And even though it is heard worldwide, it is directed towards the community, towards the people of Bristol. We'll be reporting on things in Bristol, community events, fundraisers, politics, sports, etc. If you have any questions on that, you can contact me, or you can go directly to the website, bristlebeat.com.
Thank you, Jody.
Yeah, Your Honor, first off, I want to say hopefully everyone enjoyed their Fourth of July Independence Day celebration as that has passed. I know police is a topic, but one of the things that I wanted to bring up, that I just informed Councilwoman Gagnon, she sits on the police board, and I'm gonna drop it into the chief's lap right now, is we had a fatality in front of the police station very recently, and obviously, fatality means that someone passed away, and we don't know the status of that. And I know the chief and his officers and his detective division are working on that very hard, but what we have to remind everyone is to use the crosswalk. And I'm going to come to the next police board meeting along and recommend to Councilwoman Gagnon some things that I've experienced in various different parking lot and road designs that I might recommend that the police board take a look at. Some are very inexpensive, and some might be worthwhile to employ downtown at our crosswalks, because I know, I remember when the streetscape was first done, people were intimidated by the paver crossing. They thought it was a speed bump. Once you found out that it wasn't a speed bump, now it becomes a raceway. And, you know, I'm guilty, just like everybody else. So, if I can do my part to help to make the crosswalk more visible or help people slow down, I think it would be a good thing that the entire council can work on, along with the police chief and the police commission. I also want to make note, again, Police Chief is a very popular guy tonight, that we have a fantastic police force here. And I've had plenty of instances where I was able to interact with Chief Gould as well as various officers, and we have a phenomenal police force, and I want to make sure that they're recognized. They really are great people, and some of those people graduated with me at high, were friends of mine and graduated high school, and we have a great police force, we have a great administration, and we have a great chief, and I'm proud to be from Bristol, and I'm proud to be protected by the Bristol Police. And I also don't want to leave the fire chief out of things, because we have two beautiful firehouses that, if you live in town, you should take a drive-by on Mick Street and on Vincent B. Kelly. It's really something to see. It's a level of professionalism that we're able to portray of the Bristol Fire Department. And we have some great firefighters, and they finally have stations in which to portray their professionalism and how they serve. So, it's great to recognize our first responders, the police, as well as the fire department. Thanks.
Counselor?
Yes, through the chair. For all of our District One residents and for the city at large, earlier tonight, Mr. Ruiz mentioned the Route Six corridor survey and the meeting over the weekend, a few weekends ago. I'm disappointed to learn that the survey has closed down. So, what I want to say to any residents who I'm sure in our campaigns, you know, one thing we always hear from people at that end of town is comments about Route Six and how the traffic flows, and about business on the Route Six corridor, and the whole gamut. So, if you have any recommendations that you weren't able to get in on the survey, or that you weren't able to attend that meeting a few weekends ago, if you'd like to share any comments with me through the city email, I can try and get them through to the right place, and I'm sure Councilman Damato feels the same way. That's not just a first district thing, though. Most Bristol residents and people beyond Bristol have to travel on Route Six, and we're all impacted by it, so I certainly encourage the public to stay involved in that. Also, I'd like to second the comments of my colleagues, Councilwoman Zills Gagnon and Councilman Damato. I was moved by what they said about our police department, and I was moved by President George W. Bush's comments earlier today at the funeral services in Dallas. He said something that was striking to me, and that is, he tried to remind us that we really are brothers and sisters on this planet that get to share this planet at the same moment in time for just one brief passing moment. And that means, as the president said, we have an obligation to one another, to treat each other with respect and to try and understand one another. And I know that I was raised to believe that empathy is something you have to practice. It's something that you have to actively try to do, to put yourself in somebody else's shoes, and to try to understand where they're coming from and understand their perspective. And the events of last week, and beyond that, really drive that point home for all of us. In the city of Bristol, we have a police department that really does try to build relationships with the community. Another first district example is the Roberto Clemente Baseball League at Cambridge Park. That's an example of the police department trying to be involved in the community, get kids involved, and have a positive relationship. That's part of community policing, and it's something that in Bristol, we're trying to do, and I think other communities could probably take a page out of our book if they would like to. We support the police. We all support the police. And we support members of the African-American community who are rallying together right now, saying our lives matter. We affirm, yes, they do. And we are all trying to be part of the solution. That should be our goal. That's my goal, and I'm sure my colleagues feel the same way. But in that vein, if the chair would allow me to, I'd actually like to invite Chief Gould up to maybe talk to us about some of what the police department does do in Bristol in the vein of community policing, and maybe some of the conversations that you guys have had in the last several days with other community leaders. I think it would be great for all of us to hear some good news.
First, I just want to really thank every single one of you. I don't typically get emotional, but these are tough, tough times for our nation right now, and it's really disturbing to see what's going on, because I echo your comments that we are all one, and what's happening through our nation is very disappointing. There doesn't need to There doesn't need to be division amongst anybody, and we need to work hard to keep that from happening here in Bristol, at our level. And before I go any further, I do want to introduce our second Vice President to our local NAACP chapter, Boris, who we all know better as Rippey Patton. And I would like him to come up here with me as well, because this is something that we are doing together, and it's a community issue, and it's important that we stand before you in total unity, because that's what it's all about. So, Rip?
Rippey Patton, for the record. I did want to echo the chief's sentiment, first of all, thank you so much for the invitation yesterday. And it was a very productive meeting, but I think, more than anything, what it really was, is just an affirmation that the Bristol chapter, the NAACP, and the Bristol Police Department really do stand in unison with the same common goal. And what that really is, is just to respect and protect the rights of every single person in this community, whether you are black, whether you are white, whether you are male, whether you are female, whether you live on Chipman's Hill, whether you live in the West End. Everyone has the same right, and I think that was the sentiment that we sat with yesterday. We came into the meeting with titles, the police and the NAACP, two groups that are both hurting. And it wasn't long until we were sitting down, looking across the table at each other, as brothers, as sisters, as friends, as humans, who can speak to each other, again, with one common goal. And I think that's what we accomplished, that was the goal of the meeting, and again, I think we did accomplish it, and it was extremely productive. I don't know what's going on in the rest of the world, but I do think that Bristol is in some very, very capable hands, and I think that we'll be fine.
Thanks, Rip, and step. You know, we sat together, and one thing that we all were able to absolutely agree on is that we understand and we're paying attention to what's happening throughout our nation, but our focus is home plate, the city of Bristol. And that's what we're going to continue to focus on. And, you know, our philosophy at the Bristol Police Department is community policing, and how we do that is building our partnerships and strengthening those partnerships. You never stop working at it. There's always going to be issues and setbacks, but we stand firm, and we are prepared to deal with that. And, you know, I think we're in a great place as well. You know, it really is a shame of what's going on. We emphasize professionalism and integrity. Our mission statement is very clear, to protect and serve the community with integrity and professionalism. That's it, in a nutshell, we stand by it. And the message that I wish to deliver to our entire community is we are public servants, and our goal at the Bristol Police Department is to deliver quality police servants to the residents, business owners, and visitors of the city of Bristol. And that's what your excellent men and women are doing each and every day they're out there. And we work at it, and we're going to continue to work at it, and I want to let you all know that. But we don't, we're not doing this on our own, we're doing it with everybody, with all of you. We're service. And we thank you for mentioning the Little League program. There's a lot of programs that we're involved in throughout our community. I have a whole bunch of them, I don't want to leave anybody out, but we try to tend to every part of this community possible. Our veterans, our seniors, our youth. We work hand-in-hand with our Boys and Girls Club and our youth services. We're out there trying to, you know, put a positive message that we are here, together, to work together, and that we will serve you. And our goal is protection and service. Little Leagues are, you know, this weekend, we have officers that are going to be camping out on the top of Stop &amp; Shop for the cop on top. And that's for our Dana Farber Foundation, to help raise money, which all goes to cancer research. We are very involved with Special Olympics, you know, running the torch runs, you know, we're down doing tip-a-cop and car shows with the Radisson, I'm sorry, Doubletree down on Enterprise. And, you know, we just are trying to do everything we can to address all the members of our community, and let them know that we are here, and we're for you, and we're together. So that's the message that I just want to get out today. And thank everybody for all the support, thank our community too for the support that we've been getting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin, for the suggestion, very appropriate, and thank you, Chief, and Rippey, for being proactive and taking an active role in making our community better. I have a few announcements, very quickly. The farmer's market has been open, and I just stopped down last weekend, and I want to congratulate Mark Walerzyak for all his work in setting that up. I talked to a couple vendors, and they said that they had their best week in a couple of years last weekend, so, again, that's every Saturday morning. Also, any of you that read the paper on Sunday, the Park Department, along with a group of volunteers, opened up the newest disc golf course in Rockwell Park. There was a whole article on it. It's the second one in the city. The park provided the land, and the workmanship was done by many volunteers, and, again, for a city to have two disc courses is unusual. And again, it's a tribute to what's happening with, you know, the volunteers in the community. They had a tournament last weekend, they had over 50 people involved, which was fantastic. Okay, Mary mentioned the synthetic fields, they started yesterday, moving the dirt around, so both of those are in motion. And then there's a quick announcement from the School Readiness Committee, if I can find it here real quickly, that they were able to garner a grant. If you can hang on for one second. Here we go. "The School Readiness Committee initiated a grant from the Main Street Foundation and received the support of the School Readiness Council. Will apply for the funding, they will receive the grant of $5,700 for the Grandparents as Parents, a gap program. The funds are supported by Bristol Brass Foundation and General Fund and Wally Barnes Fund for Community Leadership." Basically, it's a collaborative partner between the School Readiness Council, the parent and setting for Bristol Hospital, the Bristol Burlington Health District, Bristol Senior Center, and the Bristol Early Child Head Alliance. And again, the objective is to provide a support system to reduce family stress, develop increased social networking, peer monitoring, mentoring, support for the senior parent families to teach and enhance parenting skills. Another goal is to have increased social interaction with other senior parents, thereby providing opportunities for personal growth and promoting healthy family environments. So we congratulate them. And that's all the announcements that I have. Okay, the next item is the consent calendar.
There are five items. 5A is to place on file the new hire report for June 2016. B is to award contract 2P16-111 Assessor Mobile Data Collection Software to Data Cloud Solutions LLC for $18,400, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any documents. C is to accept the School Readiness Grant Program Award for July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, for $2,900,052, and refer to the Board of Finance for appropriation. D is to accept the Quality Enhancement Grant Program Award for July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, for $25,024, and refer to the Board of Finance for appropriation. And E is to refer the deferral to construct sidewalks in front of the Arthur G. Russell Company Incorporated at 750 Clark Avenue to the Board of Education and Board of Public Works for review.
Any discussion on these? Can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion is passed. Okay, we have reports and committees, starting from afar right. Yes, Your Honor, through, from the library, just a few quick announcements. A free lunch continues this summer in the Children's Department at the Main Library for, basically newborns through 18-years-old from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Monday through Friday, and that's going until August 19th. Additional activities are planned each day in the library for children to participate in. So for families looking for a meal, or for something that can help keep their children's brains active during the summer, library is a great place to go. Also, the annual summer reading program is in full swing at both the Main Library and the Man Ross Library. A wide variety of programs and special events are also planned for children there. Young adults and also adults are also, activities are also planned through August. For a complete listing of activities, please stop by either library or go to the library's website. And that is it for committee reports from me, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Your Honor, I have a salary committee report, which consists of actually three things. I'd like to, three motions I'd like to put on the floor, I put them out one at a time. Like to entertain a motion for the Salary Committee unanimously recommends to the City Council to approve revised pay rates for part-time and seasonal employees of the Department of Parks and Recreation, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes. And I believe Diane passed out sheets, and if there's any questions, we definitely want to call up Diane.
I was just gonna, oh, they are attached, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're in the back.
In the email that I had gotten earlier, which I thought was the same thing, those salaries weren't there for the Parks and Rec. Thank you. Sorry.
Any questions? Do you have a motion to accept?
Second.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there was a motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, Your Honor, I have a second motion that I'd like to entertain. "The Salary Committee unanimously recommends to the City Council to approve an upgrade of the positions of Assistant Superintendent of Water, Construction and Maintenance Division, and the Assistant Superintendent of Water, Meter Shop Division, from BPSA Salary Code 8, $60,724, to 78087, to BPSA Salary Code 9, $66,768, and $85,873, and refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes." And if we have any questions, we can definitely bring up Diane as well.
Second.
And I do have a question for Diane.
Diane, please.
As you know, I was on Salary Committee my last term, and I know that over the course of that time, up to now, and even prior to my being on council, the BPSA Union had been suggesting that a survey was in order to evaluate all their positions and where their salaries fall, you know, relative to other communities with people that do similar tasks. And you've told us in the past that that would be expensive, and that it couldn't be done yet, and you couldn't agree with the union on exactly what kind of survey would be done. And so, once again, we're just picking jobs and giving them upgrades. And as much as I'm probably never going to vote no, although I did once, I think, vote no for an increase in salary for one of our employees, I think that it behooves us to do the study. Because either some people in the bargaining union are not getting attention, because maybe they're quiet and polite and nice, and, you know, they're not the squeaky wheel, and so their job's not looked at and not evaluated. So if you could explain perhaps some of your reasoning, again, as to why we're picking a job, or two jobs, to have upgrades, especially when we're doing it in July, when we just went through the budget, why wasn't that done in the spring, if that was something that was important and contemplated?
Okay. So, the discussion about upgrades, I think, in the past years, throughout the recession, was that the Salary Committee was not going to look at upgrades at all. I think there were very many years where it just wasn't even put on the agenda. In this particular union, I think I've suggested the job study with the union for a number of years while you were on Salary Committee, and we've had some disagreements as to how the study would be conducted. We have a draft agreement pending, and we still are in discussions about how that study would be conducted. In the meantime, last fall, we looked at a number of positions for various reasons. Three of them were in the Water Pollution Control Division. And at that time, we said we'd continue to look at upgrades in that, or in that union, pending a job study. The job study has yet to take place, we haven't agreed on how to do it. And these positions in the Water Department are very similar to the positions in Water Pollution Control. So that was the rationale for bringing them forward. The other issue is that the Water Board is actually who brought this to the Salary Committee. This came from the Water Department and the Water Board, and the Salary Committee approved it, so it made sense to do it.
Okay, and I did see in the minutes that they were looking for a Code 10. So, who was it that recommended the Code 9 instead of Code 10?
I recommended Code 9 to be more consistent with water pollution control.
Any further questions?
I think I'm good on this motion.
Okay, ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay. Don, you have a third?
Yeah, Your Honor, I have a third motion that I'd like to entertain. "The Salary Committee unanimously recommends to the City Council to approve the addition of Salary Level 11B to the non-bargaining salary schedule for placement of police captain and superintendent of water, and refer to the Board of Finance for informational and funding purposes."
So moved. Okay, is there a second?
No, that was a second, actually, Your Honor.
Okay, is there? All right. Any discussion?
I'm just looking, once again, because we got these materials yesterday, and there was another Salary Committee meeting prior to our meetings here tonight. So I'm just looking for what changed here on this one from their June meeting?
So, the original motion, Councilwoman, was to just amend Salary Level 11A on the non-bargaining schedule, and instead, to keep it cleaner, we just instead called it 11B. So we want to make an 11B, which is halfway point between 11 and 12, and place the two police captains and the superintendent.
Okay, so there is nobody at 11A now?
So 11A is, it's not for active employees.
What do you mean by?
Well, there's, it exists.
There are no active members in 11A?
Correct.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Ready for vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Your Honor, I just have regular committee reports, if you don't mind. Public Works Miscellaneous Subcommittee, last night, a few of us met on the pilot program that both Roger and Walt are conducting with the LED light fixture upgrade in town. So we visited, actually, backtrack, we had a presentation from Turco Lead Lighting Corporation, and they showed us how the LED light works. They went over the program details, so that way the city can eventually make a decision. And they created six sites in town where, on each of those sites, there were two pole lights in a row that were changed with various manufacturer LED lights. And we got to see those lights in action last night, we got back to City Hall a couple minutes after 10 o'clock, so it's very exciting. The city is definitely, you know, moving forward. We're trying to implement the newest technology, and we're actively trying to save taxpayer money. And one of the ways that we're going to do that is through LED street lighting, so just want to keep you abreast of that. Also, I want to just note that Councilwoman Gagnon is also part of the Miscellaneous Committee, as well as Commissioner Sean Dunn. So they're both actively working hard. One other thing I'd like to discuss is upcoming is the mayor's Economic Development Committee. I can't divulge the information yet, it will come, because we haven't met yet, but there are exciting things on the forefront for economic development. So I just want to kind of put a teaser out there, there are things happening in town, and there definitely has to be if we have to meet, so I'm looking forward to that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Attorney?
Yes, three things, actually. Councilman DiMatto noted that he was going to go to the next Police Board meeting. I want to tell everybody know that the Police Board meeting for July has been canceled due to vacations and lack of a quorum. So if you're going to come, come a third week, a third Tuesday in August. From the Park Board, the summer youth and swimming programs are in full swing, and attendance is very good this year. The outdoor water spray parks are operational. The summer concert series has begun, it's every Tuesday at Rockwell, it's going on right now, Coyote River Band is playing right now, and it will be every Tuesday through the end of the summer. As Councilman Proleski has stated, Jim Rice Day at Muzzy Field is this coming Thursday, the 14th. As many of you know, Jim Rice played at Muzzy for the Bristol Red Sox, then moving on to the Boston Red Sox, he's a Hall of Famer. We are retiring his jersey, number 14, and the game starts for the Bristol Blues at 7 o'clock. The Mickey Mantle Youth Baseball World Series will play several games at Muzzy Field on July 27, 28, 29. The Northeast American Legion Baseball Tournament will be held at Muzzy, August 3rd through the 7th. And I also wanted to let everyone know, as council liaison to the Park Board, I proposed, along with, in collaboration with Councilman DiMatto and Councilman Proleski, that the park should have some kind of security, and especially at Rockwell. I think it's a beautiful park, I don't think anybody should be afraid to go there with their families. It's still in committee there. However, just recently, I reached out to the Police Chief and the head of the Parks Department about some safety concerns that I became aware of in Rockwell Park. And I'm happy to report that ever since the outdoor swimming pools opened on June 25th, the Parks Department has asked the Police Department to provide an officer to patrol Rockwell Park on the weekends. Rockwell Park on the weekends. The presence of the officer seems to make a very big difference at Rockwell, and I've heard nothing but positives and compliments from the staff and from the public. And again, as the liaison, if there's any issues, just contact me. And finally, from the Real Estate Committee, I have a motion to read. I hereby move that the City of Bristol seek requests for proposals with a, for the dis, with, I think that's written wrong, with or for the disposition of property owned by the city, known as thirty-seven Summer Street on map twenty-six of the Bristol Assessor's Office, and that the purchasing agent be authorized to request proposals, and that he send out a press release in addition to the legal notices and update the city website. I further move that the matter be referred to the Public Works to a rec signage on the property advertising the proposal. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
I got a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
That's it.
Motion carries. Councilman Proleski?
Your Honor, just a couple of things. BDA Downtown Committee had met since our last meeting, and our consultants, Malone and McBroom, are scheduled to hold its first visioning session on Tuesday, nineteenth of July, at Rockwell Park, as part of, part of the summer concert series. It's their intent to go throughout the city to find out where the people are and try to get, solicit ideas and opinions. The new website for Center Square should be up and running within the next week or a few days. I'll get the heads up from, from Justin. So that's the update from the Downtown Committee for the BDA. I'm on the Firehouse Engine Floor Renovations Committee, and I got to tell you that kudos go out to Chief Kolokowski, Chairman Smith. The, the department, they moved back into the, the new headquarters, or had new firehouse, excuse me, this past week. And the project came in under budget and on time. So kudos to everybody involved. And the last thing, I've got a couple of ordinances, Your Honor, from the, a couple of motions from the Ordinance Committee.
Okay, please present them.
The motion, I hereby move that section sixteen dash one, Veterans Memorial Park and Boulevard of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol is hereby amended to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of fourteen days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Bristol. The motion, or the language, I hope we can defer from reading. It's been provided to all the members.
Very good. Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Your Honor, the second one is, I hereby move that section seventeen dash twenty-four, Special Events Licenses, waivers and exemptions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby amended to read as follows. Again, the language is attached. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances, and they become effective upon the expiration of fourteen days of the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Bristol.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? And take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, may I speak to this? This is, this is a motion that, or an issue that was brought to us by the mayor a few weeks ago, and one of the Park Board members, Bob Ferrito. This is part of a, they wanted to have a establishment of a, of a simple licensing, or a temporary licensing provision that didn't exist in the ordinances, so that there could be truck, food vendors at the summer concert series. I got to tell you, I'm very proud. Our Ordinance Committee worked hard on this. We're serviced by attorneys Simonek and Conlin from the Corporation Council Law Office, and they do a great job for us. But in this particular case, I want to commend Attorney Conlin for doing a fabulous job. We had this thing drafted, done in like, two days. And Tony and Dave, you both were very cooperative in terms of scheduling special meetings and things. They talk about the speed of government. Well, this is an exception to that. I think we did a great job in a very short period of time.
I agree, and I commend you for your, for your leadership with that. And also, you know, now we just wait fourteen days for the publication to get out there, and it's fourteen days from that, and hopefully we'll be able to have those food trucks this year, when no one thought that it would be possible, so.
Your Honor, can I, can I mention something about that? If you don't mind, Councilman Proleski?
Sure.
One, one thing that I wanted to mention, I actually went into Teresa's office the other day, is she had some input with regards to the health regulation. So I want to commend that, because that was a concern that the Ordinance Committee had. And we're making sure that these food vendors have to comply with that. So we, she's got an input from them, and she's made sure that we had that feedback. So Teresa, thanks, we appreciate it. I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that.
Thank you. Good. Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, I only have one committee report. I currently am a member of the Board of the Bristol Community Organization, known as BCO. And for various reasons, BCO is working on a merger with their sister organization in New Britain. Those two organizations, possibly by the end of the year, hopefully, no later than the beginning of, of next year, will be, hopefully merged. And one thing that we discussed at our last board meeting is the fact that rumors start about, you know, going around, that somehow we're not going to have services here in Bristol. We expect to, at this moment, be in the same footprint that we currently are at BCO, and provide basically the same services. There's going to be a lot of merging of technology and of administration, so that hopefully, with the limited funds that they get from grants, most of their money comes from federal grants, some state grants, which obviously are dwindling sometimes, that hopefully, by merging the two organizations, they'll be able to use their grant monies to provide actually more direct services than they do now. And so we do want to just get that word out there, that there should be no actual diminishment of any services here in Bristol, if that merger goes through. So, that's it.
Thank you. Unfinished business, starting from my far left. You have anything?
Let's see. I do have a couple of things. I'm wondering about the state of the City Hall building itself. And I know we've talked a couple times, we've asked for a couple of months now on how the, the LED reports are going. And we had gotten word that there may be a need to renovate the HVAC system. And I don't, I guess that was an outcome of all the testing that was done, and that perhaps City Hall has to be temporarily moved to do that. And I'm just wondering if there's any update on that situation, who's making those decisions, and where we're at with that.
Walt, do you want to address that?
Public Works currently has a preliminary study being done by two consulting mechanical engineers to look at the renovation of the perimeter HVAC system, and looking at some, some options for that, for that, change of that system, and then looking to see whether, from a cost standpoint, the savings, if we phase it, keeping people here, phase it, moving people into different areas of City Hall and working, or if the greatest advantage is to move everyone out. And we're expecting that information in the latter part of July, and then we'll be evaluating it and bringing something forward to the Board of Finance, once we have that all together.
Okay, and I know that the HVAC system itself here at City Hall was on the ten-year capital improvement plan for out years, you know, something that we knew would have to be replaced or fixed in years to come. And we're bringing it forward now because of the LED situation. Can you just connect those two things? I'm just not--
Well, there's, there's two HVAC systems in City Hall. There's a, one system that's a central core system, and, and then there's a secondary system that are, that are perimeter units that are around all of the windows, that supplements the heating and cooling because of the, the heat and cooling load that you get on the exterior of the building. And the, we have some LED contamination in the ducting of the perimeter units based upon the, the material that the duct is, is constructed out of, and the, and the construction of those units. And we're, rather than trying to clean those units, it's going to be more costed beneficial to simply replace them. It was part of a capital project, so we're looking at moving that, that project forward. There still is, you know, other capital projects related to the HVAC system, so it's only bringing one phase--
A part of it.
Yes.
Okay. And currently, are we using that, that--
Yes, we are. We're using that, that system. We've, and we've done air testing and also wipe testing to make sure that the, that we're not putting out any, any LED. We have it trapped in the system, but it, we know that it's there, and so we're, we're taking the measures to remove it.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair, can I ask a follow-up question to that? So if you are using, let me back up. The decision has been made to ask the Board of Finance to move up on the ten-year capital improvement list, the replacement of the perimeter HVAC system. But we're still using the HVAC system. And you're saying that there's no evidence of LED being--
Discharged.
Produced or discharged from that system? So my question is, if that's true, what is the need to move up the replacement of the system?
Well, we know that there's, that we will still have to do maintenance on that system, so there's going to be things that go on that disturb that system.
Okay.
And so it's time, because we know that, we know that it's there, we think it's the best thing to move that project up. And, but it's not something that, that we have to do tomorrow, and that we, we now know that it's trapped, so we, that gives us time to, to look at what's the, the most effective and cost-efficient way to replace that system, to minimize the disruption to those who work and those who come to do business at City Hall.
Okay. So, so the, then, the idea of moving this up on the project list is strictly just to try and measure what makes the most financial sense? But you're saying that there is no direct threat to the public or the people that work here in terms of health?
There is no direct threat to the public at this time.
What about the people that work here?
There's no direct threat.
To the people that work here?
No.
Okay. And sort of keeping in that same line of thought, where do we stand with the LED remediation that's going on, and the rest of the tests that have occurred for LED dust over the last several weeks?
I don't quite understand what you're asking, I'm sorry.
Hasn't there been more testing done, air sampling for LED in the last couple of weeks?
Yes, we have done sampling, and there is, there is no airborne LED, and there is no LED has been picked up on the wipe samples in, that exceeds any of the residential standards.
All right. So at this point, you think the LED issue, if we could call it that, has been pretty well remediated in this building?
No, it has not been remediated. It's under control.
It's under control.
Well, Walt, can I ask you a question that may help clear this up? How were the units cleaned? Is that, is, is, that's what agitated the LED situation? Correct me if I'm wrong, right?
Well, there, there were several things that, that agitated the, the LED situation, but there's, but we now know that the LED is now stabilized, it's trapped in the, in the system, and as long as we don't do things to disturb it--
Correct.
--we're in a stable situation.
What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get at is to clarify things here, because I have experience in HVAC, and when you go to clean a unit, or you agitate the inside of the duct, when you agitate that, you make airborne contaminants that's in there. The airflow doesn't necessarily agitate what's negative. The airflow initially will agitate that, because it's been disturbed. When it's no longer disturbed, the airflow doesn't agitate that, so you still have a problem, but as Walt said, it's under control, so.
When do we know, when can you expect the decision to be made about whether or not we'll have to relocate City Hall? You said at the end of July?
We, we will have our preliminary reports back, and we'll begin discussions with the two consult, our two consultants. And then we look to go to the Board of Finance. Our goal--
At the July meeting.
Is at their, actually at their August meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay.
But we don't know, I mean, we, there's several things we have to put together, so I don't know that we'll be in, that will be the meeting, but we're, our reports will be back to start the discussions the end of this month.
Okay.
Anything further?
Yes.
Dave? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was, that was my first point, so, but nothing further on this topic, but I do have another couple of items under unfinished business. The next, I keep touching that the wrong way, I'm sorry. The next one would be the investigation that we were privy to several months ago, and it was not to be disclosed, because there was still underlying investigation going on. And I'm just going to ask that every month, I guess, until we have an answer. Do we have any update on those underlying investigations? I don't know who the--
Actually, Councilwoman, I can tell you that both investigations have been referred to outside counsel. They've been referred out for determination of how to handle one dash two-ten B two of the Connecticut statutes with regard to confidentiality. And until the report or, or the opinion comes back, I've been asked not to release anything.
Okay, thank you. That's at least something. Thank you. And I did want to make just one comment under unfinished business regarding charter revision. Tonight's joint meeting was, I just felt a little awkward, like, I really thought we were going to have a discussion. I thought it was going to be, and I say that because we, apparently in recent history, we've never sent things back to charter revision for, for amendment like that. But I would have looked forward to a lot of discussion with them. And I just want to comment that I am disappointed that they didn't take up some of the things that were brought to them, including the referendum issue on large-ticket items, the Board of, Board of Education term limit issue that could impact the Board of Ed. We could have all new Board of Ed people in the future. In other words, there's going to come a time when no one will be able to run, and so it'll have to be all new people. And I think that should have been addressed before that becomes a problem. And the other issue that was brought up regarding grievances by employees against elected officials, that we don't have anything that covers that in our current charter. And so again, I just want to put that on the record, that I would hope that those things can be taken up perhaps by the next Charter Revision Commission. And that's it for me for unfinished business.
Counselor?
Well, can I just ask a question of Corporation Counsel, as maybe a follow-up? Can you detail for us the procedure now? We've, I'm, I'm very disappointed as well, as what Mary said, that there wasn't more of a give and take on each of the issues, but now we sent it back to them, they're going to schedule a meeting, well, Ed, maybe you can--
Yeah, the statute reads that, once you've made recommendations, they have to have a meeting. They can entertain your recommendations, they can adopt them, they can reject them. Whatever it is that they do, they then issue what is called a final report. That final report comes back to you, and then you get to do either this or that.
Is a, is another, is another public hearing--
No.
--an option?
Nope. It's all done.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? No. Tony?
None, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yes, Your Honor, before my unfinished business item, I'll, I'll quickly make an announcement. I probably should have done this under announcements earlier, but I think it qualifies as an unfinished item, or old business, maybe. This is just for the general public, so you know. On July twenty-third at six PM at Muzzy Field, there's going to be a fundraiser in support of the MUM Festival and the MUM Parade. So if you're interested in helping the, the Exchange Club and the groups that are supporting the MUM Festival and the MUM Parade raise enough money to make that happen this year, there is going to be an, a fundraiser at the Bristol Blues game on Saturday, July twenty-third. Tickets are twenty-five dollars, and that includes your ticket for the game, dinner, unlimited drinks for two hours. And if somebody is interested in getting tickets for that, I'd ask you to contact some of the members of the Bristol Exchange Club. One was Mr. Ripley Patton, who had to dart out, and another is our esteemed leader, Mr. Jack Farraro, who is in the audience tonight. And I can also help you get in touch with them if you want tickets to that. That's the announcement that I missed. And we've talked about the LED--
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business. Unfinished business, yeah. Okay.
Do you have any, do you have anything else?
No, I think we've already talked about everything I want to talk about.
How about new business?
New business.
Start with you.
Yeah, so, based on the conversations we were having earlier today amongst ourselves and with members of the audience in regard to the seating at Memorial Boulevard School, I'm wondering if this body would entertain maybe like an informal sort of recommendation to the MBS Task Force and the Building Committee, saying that this body is also concerned about the proposal to reduce the number of seats, and that we really would encourage them to maintain the seating capacity that already exists. Maybe we could do that in the form of like, a non-binding resolution?
I would be hesitant to do that unless we get all the information as to why they're doing it, and what their thought processes were. That's the only thing that I'm saying. Unfortunately, Maria O'Brien just left. She would have been able to help us out with some information, which would have been ideal, but we couldn't do that. So maybe we could, again, I would hesitate to do that unless everybody has the information that they need to have.
Well, I agree.
I mean, obviously, we all want to have seats, but we don't know the number. Okay? So if we wanted to make a general announcement that we'd like to consider more seats than 400, I think, I think that would be appropriate, but to give...
Sure, oh yeah, I don't think we have a specific number.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'd be interested in voting on a specific number. I think it's, it's more of a recommendation for them to reconsider that significant cut. I mean, it doesn't have to be every single seat that they have there.
No, no, no.
But I think it's something that makes a significant difference in this project, and I think the speaker said it very eloquently, and I just think that we should support that and let the, and it's really not the task force, it's the Building Committee and the nonprofit organization. There's no more task force anymore. But the two organizations, to let them know that we feel that we should have as much capacity as possible in order to make the project successful, that, you know, future shows successful and accessible to the projects in Bristol.
Well, we could, you know, again, just pass the word along, I think, I don't know if we need a formal, formal motion. I think if the consensus of the, of the council is that we should consider more seating, I think we can pass that along as a...
Okay, that's good enough for me. I think that was the consensus from our conversation earlier.
And if that's the, if that is the consensus at the next board meeting, I will be sure to pass that along.
There you go. Okay. Any other new business?
Not for me, your honor.
None, your honor?
None.
Tony?
None.
None for me.
None for me. Okay, resignations?
There are three resignations. The first is from William Greger, from the Board of Police Commissioners. The second is from Robert Bianchi, from the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. And the third is from Sharon Kenny, from the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Need a motion to accept? Move it.
Second. Make a motion to accept, and do we send thank you notes? Is that normally part of our motion? And I did want to just comment that I served with Bob Bianchi on the Disability Commission, and he was an exceptional member of the Disability Commission, and I, anyone that might be interested in taking his place, please let us know, because his shoes will be hard to fill.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Any appointments?
Yes.
I don't have any. Thank you.
It's not anything that's scribbled, it's not on, it's just the opening.
Okay. Okay, the first is an assessor to appoint Thomas Dino to a four-year term, 720. We need a vote on this, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Burgess Pond Hoppers Committee to appoint Ann La Croix to replace Jean Luterno, Section 2-9, resignation, no term. Have a, we need a motion, right?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Bristol Burlington Board of Health to reappoint Leslie Kish to a three-year term, 79. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Planning Commission to reappoint Roland Loringer to a five-year term, and 73121. Motion, please. So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Park Commissioners, Police Commissioners, to appoint David Mikowski to replace William Greger, resigned, unexpired term, 1218.
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Stormwater Trust to reappoint Ron Smith, three-year term, 719. Motion, please. Move it.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. To reappoint Jeff Bochamp, Police Department Rep, three-year term, 619. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Carries. To reappoint Tanya Lasdesma, City, Citizen Rep, three-year term, 619.
What board?